Morning, everybody. Today's Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. The time is 9:00 a.m. We're here for a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Joe Nevs?
Here.
Richard Valley?
Here.
Doug Verboon?
Here.
Rusty Robinson?
Here.
Richard Fagundes?
Here.
Thank you. All five members are in attendance. Next, we'll go to the invocation. You please stand and, uh, miss, Pastor Tim Brown, Quantonia First Presbyterian Church. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. It's an honor to be asked to be here today, so thank you very much. Would you bow with me in prayer? Well, God, we come before you with gratitude today. We thank you for being a God of love who is with us now, who is with us in this very room. Your word tells us that you never leave us or forsake us. For that, we're grateful. Your grace has brought us safe thus far, and your grace will continue to lead us. I thank you for making each of us in this room, every person we meet, every citizen of this city and county, in your own image, with dignity and infinite worth. We thank you for your calling that you have given to every one of us to be good stewards of your creation, to love our neighbors as ourselves. I thank you, God, for these, your servants, the Board of Supervisors and their staffs. I give thanks for the way of service that they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here. We all in this room have complex lives and we're complex human beings, carrying burdens, carrying joys, hope, trusting that you alone can hold us together in your joy, your love, and your peace. For many in this room who celebrated the life of Sebastian yesterday, we remember the Dubersky family and his passing. We pray for those who are struggling within our own midst and in our city and in our county and our state and in our world who are struggling to overcome addiction. We pray for their families as well. Your word tells us in Proverbs 3, 5, and 6, that if we trust in you with all of our heart and lean not on our own understanding, if we trust you in all our ways, you'll make our paths straight. The word says in James, Chapter 1, that if we lack wisdom to ask of you, who gives generously to all. So, God, I pray that the discussion and the decisions made today would be done with a lot of wisdom, and where that may lack on our personal efforts, I ask that you would grant it. I pray that you would be glorified today through the decisions of this Board of Supervisors, and we pray that your kingdom would come in Kings County as it is in heaven through your power working in each of your servants. I pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage to do what is right. May we act in love for the common good of our neighbors, and may we be good neighbors recognizing your image in every person here. Thank you again for these, your servants, and we ask for your wisdom. In your name we pray. Amen.
Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Pledge.
My pledge is to consider the life of the United States of America and to carry it in public for which it stands, one way or another, if it was wrong, but if it keeps us strong.
Next up is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public. Madam Clerk, is there anyone, uh, any speaker cards or anyone online?
I have no written correspondence, but I do have a speaker card from Miguel Ramirez.
Okay. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair and Honorable Supervisors. My name is Miguel Ramirez. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for SoCalGas. SoCalGas's mission is to build the cleanest, safest, and most innovative energy infrastructure company in North America. We're doing so by continuing to invest in our infrastructure, making progress on our Aspire 2045 sustainability strategy, which includes an aspiration to achieve net zero carbon emissions in our operations and energy we deliver. SoCalGas's commitment to our customers goes beyond providing safe, reliable, cleaner energy. We are also committed to improving the quality of life in the communities we serve. That's why we recently announced the 2023 Fueling Our Communities initiative to help address food insecurity. Our Fueling Communities initiative began in 2020 as a collaboration between SoCalGas and nonprofits to provide free meals to individuals impacted by COVID-19. This year, we donated $4 million to more than 60 nonprofits to provide free meals and groceries to low-income individuals throughout our 12-county service territory. Here in current, uh, Kings County, we donated $40,000 to the Central California Food Bank. This funding will provide a variety of food support at two distribution sites in the rural communities of Corcoran and Lemoore. These distributions will serve approximately 300 families or 1,020 individuals each month for six months. That equates to providing more than 16,000 meals or 20,000 pounds of groceries per month. We plan to hold multiple volunteer opportunities throughout the year with our nonprofit partners, so our employees can also help distribute food and make a difference in the communities we live and work. I plan to share those opportunities with you if you want to volunteer with me. As part of the contribution, in January, we contributed more than $6 million to the Gas Assistance Fund. If you have individuals that are struggling to pay their gas bills, please visit socalgas. dot four slash assistance. They qualify for a $500 gas credit. In closing, we are grateful to be a partner. In closing, we are grateful to be a partner and a community member, and I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you again for allowing me to.
Hey, thank you, Miguel. Appreciate you being here.
The next speaker is Sarah Hacker.
Morning, Madam DA.
Good. Welcome this Tuesday. Um, I did want to give you another weekly update. I recently had a request from one of my full-time employees to employee attorneys to go part-time and work a limited schedule, and I have another deputy district attorney. Four, one of our highest-level prosecutors, apply for Kern County DA's office, where they are offering a $15,000 signing bonus. We've had a recruitment out for a deputy DA 1 and 2 positions since February 22nd, 2023, and since then, we've only had one applicant who is immediately hired by Tulare County for $20,000 more than what we are offering here in Kings County. And they were able to interview her and hire her before we were able to interview her. The second recruitment I've had for DA, deputy DA positions 3 and 4 have been open since February 22nd, 2023. We've had two applicants since then. One of those applicants were hired by San Joaquin County for significantly more money than what we had offered her, and the other applicant was somebody who was previously released here from probation. Uh, that, that's all the applicants I've had. In the last week, we've had two homicides. One of them was a 15-year-old boy that was shot in the head. Last night, we had another one at the reservation. If we don't have attorneys to prosecute these cases, then we are putting our county at risk, and I'm asking you to untie my hands and allow me to hire people at market rate. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, we just, hopefully, the $6 million the board allocated last week helps with all of that. The signing bonuses, the recruitment, the retention, that, all that is heard, and every week as you come up, the board has taken a lot of that into consideration, and I think we put our money where our mouth is last season. Very proud of the $6 million, and I, again, I hope it helps public safety at all levels.
I, I appreciate the efforts that the board have been, has been doing, but salaries are important, too. And yes, retention benefits are great, signing benefits are great, but those are short-term solutions. We need to put in place a longer-term solution, because when people come to our website and they see a $71,000 entering salary when just the county next door is offering 93, a signing bonus is going to be good, but.
There's also other things that go into account, though, too, as well with Tulare County's retirement system, their health and benefits where Kings County, um, it differs, and there's some balancing there, too. So, um, I just don't want the community, the public, to think that it's black and white like that, 'cause we, Kings County is a good place to work, but we're moving forward together. We'll keep, we'll keep pushing.
I agree. Kings County is a wonderful place to work and to live, but we got to make it safe, and I appreciate what you guys have done so far.
Thank you, Madam DA. Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that I have, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Okay. If it's okay with the board, if I use my board member announcement time up front, there's a, uh, two-minute video on the unveiling on the Five Pillars of Freedom, like to share with the community, and, um, if we can go ahead and row that right now. Appreciate that.
A statue or building that is built to honor someone notable for a special event. A memorial is a structure or statue built to remember a deceased person or people who died in an important past event. All can be applied here, but there is one more thing that applies. A pillar. A pillar is a tall, vertical structure or statue of wood, stone, or metal used to support a building or something that needs support. As a United States Marine veteran, on behalf of all veterans, in the future, when you see this part, know that we need your support.
Thanks, thanks, thank you, Board, for letting us show that. And again, just wanted to show it one time, uh, as a volunteer, as a, a, a young kid who, uh, did the videography that day a cou- a couple months ago, and he produced that. It got released on YouTube last week, and so, um, again, just a reminder, we got something special that belongs to Kings County. That's for all the veterans in United States of America and their families, and if you haven't had a chance yet, uh, please come to Corcoran, come, uh, uh, give it a look. All the department heads came about, uh, two weeks ago, and I appreciate them coming to, uh, come see that, but that's something that, special that we all did, we all did together, and, uh, if it's okay with everybody, maybe we could, uh, get it posted on our county, um, social media platforms, get the YouTube link out there, and appreciate if you guys share it among your networks and spread the word, um, some more work to get out that, uh, the Five Pillars are there. And also want to thank Dom and his wife, who volunteered, uh, she did all the, uh, Dom's wife did all the photography, have some amazing pictures. One hangs in, uh, Super Moon's office. You get a chance to look at it, very nice, big framed of the, um, the jets, uh, from N.A.S. Lemoore flying over the Five Pillars of Freedom.
The jets, the flag, and, and anthrax.
It was beautiful. Yeah, how the train just happened to come through when we were, when we were unveiled, but yeah, they got a shot. That is pretty cool. It's symbolic, and, uh, but yeah, and, and if it's okay, let's get some of Dom's wife's beautiful photos from time to time, like linked up on there to promote it. Um, that'd be very nice. She did good work, and so thank you again, everybody. Thanks for your time. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, I guess we're moving on to, um, approval of the minutes, report out a closed session from regular meeting for June 13th, 2023. Counsel, you got anything?
There's nothing to report.
Thank you. Item B, approval of the minutes from regular meeting for June 13th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Fagundes, second by Verboon. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Item passes five in favor. Thank you. The consent calendar has a number of items that have been posted, uh, they're on the agenda. If the, uh, board doesn't have any questions or comments, Chair, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Robinson.
Second.
Second by Verboon. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Uh, consent passes five in favor. Thank you. Now we go on to, uh, regular agenda items.
Super Verboon, move to try asking.
Right. Uh, regular agenda items. Uh, item A comes from Behavior Health Department. Morning.
Good morning, Chairman Valley Board of Supervisors. Katie Arns, Deputy Director with your Behavioral Health Department. I'm here this morning to present two items. The first is a request to approve a First Amendment to the Agreement with Champions Recovery Alternative Programs for Substance Use Disorder Outpatient and Rec- and Residential Services Retroactive Effective July 1st of 2022 through September 30th of 2024. Currently, through the county's agreement with Champions, Champions provides five core services. Two of those are outpatient treatment. One is called outpatient drug-free, and the other is called intensive outpatient treatment. In addition to, um, two residential treatment programs, one for women called Hannah's House and one for men called Samuel's House, and then Champions also provides drug testing for collaborative justice treatment courts. Um, over this last fiscal year, Champions has received a significant increase in referrals for community members who are seeking services, and that has coupled with challenges that they've experienced organizationally with recruitment and retention, specifically of certified substance use disorder treatment counselors. In the state of California, there's about a 25% decrease in individuals who are currently graduating with associate's degrees that would lead them to being substance use disorder treatment counselors. In addition to here in Kings County, there's significant competition with our state prisons who pay significantly higher for these positions. So what the department has done is worked very closely with the Champions team. We have two representatives here today, Frank Reese and Jessica Schneider, um, to support them in identifying, first and foremost, pathways to ensure that people are able to engage in treatment, um, when they're requesting it, and then, second, pathways for recruitment and retention of staff, which includes in this amendment an increase in salaries for staff, in addition to, um, recruitment bonuses and retention bonuses for staff as well. This amendment also includes the addition of three SUDS counselors to also try to address, um, having more staff on board in case people do leave, and also being able to meet that increased demand in the community, along with the increase of an additional halftime program manager for Hannah's House. Um, let me see here. With that, there is no impact to the County General Fund, um, for this increase. Um, the amended agreement amount for fiscal year 2223 would be $1,845,803, which is an increase to the currently approved budget and contract with Champions of $400,003,303. This increase includes the combined budgets of Women's Perinatal Residential, Outpatient Drug-Free, Intensive Outpatient Treatment, and, um, Collaborative Justice Treatment Courts. I am here, along with the Champions staff, to address any questions you might have about this proposed amendment to their agreement.
Any questions or comments from the board? Super Verboon?
Two questions. One, why the retro? It's a year late. Uh, secondly, we always give money to Behavior Health and Champions and all these programs out here. When do we get a presentation on what they actually do, like an evaluation? I mean, how many people do we treat? Where do they go? Uh, or we just pass out money? I'm, I'm really getting tired of, of publicly having to defend these programs when we're not showing any success, uh, not just, uh, Behavior Health, but, uh, HSA. Uh, a lot of money goes out constantly. The economy's in the tank. Uh, it's in a tank because we've been giving money to people that don't, uh, are, are, aren't productive members of society, and so as elected up here, we pay the price when we go out in public. So I would like to see, uh, some kind of a presentation showing all the positive things they've done through Champions, and, uh, show me, you know, give me some statistics. I know that it's increasing, but, you know, it's a lot of money going out constantly. We just heard from the DA. We can't keep staff here because we can't be competitive with neighboring counties, and here we are giving money away to help people that aren't productive members of society. We're helping them, but how much are we helping them? Is it, is it really making a difference? I mean, you know, we can't go to dinner in our communities because if we make a decision giving you 1.5 million dollars, people are questioning us, you know, because we're, the homelessness is getting bigger and bigger, the drugs are getting more and more, and it doesn't seem like we're, we're making a dent in it. So I would like to see someone make some kind of presentation to show us what we're actually getting for our money.
Absolutely. So regarding your first question, your board approved an agreement for this fiscal year, fiscal year 2223, with Champions on October 11th, and that was for, um, right around 1.4 million dollars. So what we're requesting is to amend that budget of 1.4 to increase it by 400,000, and that's the portion that's being addressed as retroactive. Um, and second, we would welcome the opportunity to come and present and bring back Champions to share about all of the great successes and their hard work in the community. I really appreciate that, and we will certainly do that in the months to come.
Yeah, I appreciate it, too, because, uh, you know, we did the Upholding Project, you know, with 17 rooms that we were going to support, and false information got out. Uh, we approved the project, and false information got out. The community went up in arms, and we're still getting backlash today from that, and all Behavior Health had to do, all, uh, self-help had to do, all the Upholding Project had to do was put out the proper information. They've had since, uh, February of 2020, and no one's done nothing. We take the hit on that all, constantly. All I want to see is proper information put out in the public, and we have social media page, it can be done that way. We have all kinds of outlets. You guys get your money, and you disappear, and we pay the price. We'll support your stuff, but you guys support us at the same time, and, uh, you know, I like to go to my community. I like to go out in public without being harassed by decisions that were falsely put out in the public. It would be a lot easier in my life to do that, and I said, I've been saying this for three years, and I have not seen anything from anybody. I think that Upholding Project really put a bad taste in my mouth, and, uh, no one tried to correct it. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Supervisor Verboon, and we will be bringing Champions back for that presentation.
Okay, we look forward to that, then. Anybody else? Good? Okay.
There are no questions or comments, Mr. Chair. Move for, uh, adoption as presented?
Motion by Nevs.
Second.
Second by Fagundes. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. Thank you.
So you've got me one more time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I am here to request your board's approval of a First Amendment to the Agreement with Mental Health Systems Incorporated for Assertive Community Treatment Full Service Partnership Services Retroactive July 1st, 2022 through September 30th of 2024. Uh, before I dive in, I'll call out the retroactive part, which is that your board originally approved this agreement for this fiscal year 2223 on September 27th of 2022, and what we're bringing back to you is a proposed increase in this fiscal year of $82,213, and I will explain why in just a moment. Um, Assertive Community Treatment is an internationally recognized, evidence-based treatment model that is for persons experiencing severe mental illness who are most at risk of psychiatric crisis, hospitalization, and potential involvement with the crim- criminal justice system. ACT provides an integrated intensive outpatient care for adults. It's truly our highest level of outpatient care for community members. Um, with that, this amendment, it does two things. One, it increases the budget by the $82,000, and that's in order to be able to increase housing supports for individuals that are participating in ACT services. And then, second, it also extends the period of the contract for an additional 15 months. Over this last fiscal year, the ACT program has served 95, um, community members and successfully provided housing for 34 of those community members, which we're really proud of. Um, with that, there is no impact with this amendment to the County General Fund. The agreement, the amendment agreement for fiscal year 2223 is, um, an increase in $82,213, which would make the grand total of this fiscal year budget $1,282,213. The agreement amount for fiscal year 22, or sorry, 2324 would be $1,292,927. Um, expenses under this agreement and sufficient revenues were included in the department's fiscal year 2223 adopted budget, as well in the 2324 recommended budget that will be presented to your board today. Um, I also am happy to share that we have Alicia Austin Townsend, who's a, um, Vice President with Mental Health Systems, in addition to Samantha Stack, who is the local program manager that oversees operations on WebEx today, joining us.
Okay.
And happy to address any questions you might have on this, too.
Okay, we welcome them. We appreciate them being on the WebEx. Any questions or comments from the board at this time? Okay. Chair, I'll entertain a motion on this.
There are no questions or comments, Mr. Chair. Nevs moves to, um, uh, as of, as presented.
Motion by Nevs.
Second.
Thanks, Super Verboon. Thank you.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
I was getting ready to second myself.
He was looking at me like.
It's a standoff.
Uh, item passes five in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B comes from the Department of Finance. Hey, good morning, sir.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, got a couple items for you this morning.
Got a couple items for you this morning. The first, the Finance Department is requesting authorization to make the final budget transfers after the fiscal year has been closed and all the final numbers have been determined. We, the state does not allow county departments to exceed their net county cost or their budgeted unreimbursed cost. If we do have a department that exceeds their cost, this will allow us to make a transfer from another budget unit within that same department to cover the shortfall. We do provide admin with a budget summary before we do these transfers, so they are aware of the departments that do exceed their net county cost. There's no fiscal impact of this, as all the transfers will occur within a department's approved budget. No transfers will occur from contingencies as a result of this action. So, any questions?
Yeah, so what's, is there a total amount then? This is money at the end of the year that each department didn't spend, right?
That they overspent. Yeah, if they overspend their budget, yeah. If they have another budget unit within their department that has some savings, we can transfer that savings to cover the shortfall, right?
Oh, I see. Okay.
We balance it out. Right.
Got it.
Something our state and our auditors look at every year to make sure everybody's alive.
Any questions?
Kind of do a little bit of a board.
I move with presented.
Motion by Verboon, second by Fagundes. Madam Clerk?
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Item passes five in favor. You have one more item.
Yes, sir. Okay, and this item, I'm requesting approval of a resolution establishing our annual appropriation limit, which is also referred to as the GAN limit. Pursuant to Government Code Section 7910 and Article 8B of the California Constitution, each year we are required to establish appropriation limits for certain locally controlled revenues like property taxes. This limit is adjusted annually by local population increases and the statewide increase in personal income. The limit for 2324 is increasing by 4.85%, which reflects a 0.039% population increase and a 4.44% increase in personal income growth, with these numbers being provided to us by the state. This limit continues to have no fiscal impact to our county. Taxpayer refunds would only occur if our taxes exceed this appropriation limit. And as you can see, we're currently about 116 million below that limit. Last year, we were about 106 million, so that gap continues to grow. So, yeah, with that, I ask that you adopt this resolution, sorry, establishing the county appropriation limit for fiscal year 2324.
All right, thank you for the presentation, sir. Anything from the Board? Motion by Fagundes. Second by Neves, Madam Clerk.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Item passes five in favor. Thank you. Next item is back to the District Attorney. We have Item C.
Gentlemen, I'm asking you to approve the proposed agenda item. This agenda item would enable me to hire anybody within a job specification at any level. This would be only a temporary authorization. But as I had mentioned before, we had three candidates for a deputy district attorney position. Two of those three candidates were hired by a different county at a higher rate than when I could have offered them a rate that would have been commensurate with their experience. And what I'm offering, what I'm asking you to do is to assist me in hiring people so that we can hire people at an appropriate rate. If you do not authorize this, then I'm going to try and recruit people, but they may be qualified at a higher rate than what I can immediately offer them. And it would take two weeks for an approval by you to get to the agenda. And in that period of time, historically, we've lost candidates. And so I'm asking the Board to approve this agenda item temporarily so that I can have the opportunity to hire people at a rate that would be appropriate for their classification.
All right, now I'll just open up, just ask, CEO Martinez, what is this? What? Do you recommend this step here? And does it open the door for the fire chief? Any concerns that the sheriff may have? Budget-wise, does it stay within a controlled budget? And you're hiring people, and it goes CalPERS and benefits. All of that, which we take into account. Can you give us your perspective?
So we actually work closely with HR on this matter because, again, this item was something going above and beyond what our authority is. And so we worked with the DA and requested to add some language in there that the candidate must meet qualifications for that step. That was a proposal that we had to move the item along. We do have a neutral stance on it. We do believe that it will open up for other departments to come and request such item if we do that. Because currently, if an employee goes, it does go to step three, which goes through our office, but this would forego that, and it would give the DA the authority to hire above step five.
As a board, were we ever taking an action like this, Sue Neves?
I don't recall.
Nothing formally has ever come to the Board of this nature. I have not, I wasn't here previously when there was something similar. So this is something that, that's why we wanted to bring it to your Board for consideration, for discussion.
And I would also add that our department is differentiated from other departments here. One, I'm the only department head that comes to you every week and explains to you, week by week, developments that are going on with the personnel in my office. Two, we are at a critical stage at the DA's office where we are not going to be able to staff grant-funded positions. So we are going to be missing out on income that we would have otherwise received from places like the Department of Insurance for prosecuting insurance crimes, the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation as compensation for prosecuting prison crimes. And potentially, we may have to not prosecute gang crimes because of the immediate loss of personnel. And so this department, the DA's department, is one, critical to the safety of Kings County; two, losing a lot of personnel that we cannot replace; and three, I'm giving you updates every single week regarding these losses in personnel; and four, if I can't replace that personnel, then the county is going to be missing out on income. Further, if we can't prosecute cases in a timely manner, that's more time that inmates are going to have to wait in our jail for their cases to be resolved, which is additional money that's coming out of the county coffers. And so what I'm asking is that you make an exception for the DA's office, considering the critical levels that we're at today.
And this is temporary, and let her catch up.
It's till June 1st, 2024?
For a year. Yeah, for a year. A year. Can't get people to hire. I mean, it's really wasted, but it's up to her to make the work. With that, I'll make a motion to accept as presented.
I'll second. Any other comments? HR? Yes. Thank you, I appreciate you coming out.
Historically, we have done something similar in the past, but it was only to the step three that allowed the department head in the district attorney's office to hire at the specific level that they qualified up to step three without admin approval. This is the first time in my tenure of 20 years that we've done it for the Board of Supervisors. But I do think we're at a critical time where we have seen at least two offers extended, and because we were waiting to take it to the Board, we lost those individuals. So this helps her to expedite that, but we'll still work with her closely to make sure they qualify at those levels.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that. Anybody else? Chief, do you have anything you want to say on it? I wish the sheriff was here, because I know he would kind of paint that out as well. Because, again, if the fire, as much as I want to help the DA, it's office and the mission. If fire...
Sheriff's on.
Fire requests this, the sheriff requests this. Oh, the sheriff's on.
Yeah, we do run across this in our profession also, where we have people that are qualified, and we have to start them at a lower level. We've kind of accepted that as normal business, but if there's a way to change that, we gladly welcome that. Because we want to, we want to pay people to the level that they're actually qualified for, so.
Yeah. Because even though some of you don't come to the podium every Tuesday, we do hear from the chief, we hear from the sheriff. They're vocal. Their representation is vocal. And is the sheriff willing to make a comment? Hands up.
His hands up.
There he is. Morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. Sorry, I'm out of town at a state sheriff meeting, but I wanted to join this morning because I know the budget's coming up later as well. I do support this. And I think in my comments last week, you could see that there are some changes that definitely need to be made, you know, countywide. But when you're a defendant and you go to court, if they don't have enough public defenders, they will literally spend money to hire a private attorney, so that way you have representation. And if we have prosecutors and we don't have enough attorneys, just like we don't with county council, you know, we've, we've just got to, we've got to do something here. And the district attorney is absolutely correct. If these cases drag out, it's costing all of us, you know, more taxpayer dollars in that they're sitting in jail longer. And, and so, you know, I do support this. I wouldn't be asking for it in my department at this time. We're doing pretty good overall, except for hiring in the jail facility. And I do feel like when we get the salary study back, that we'll have a broader discussion on hopefully some, some other changes, like schedule changes, longevity pay changes, et cetera, that can really put Kings County at the top of the list instead of always kind of near the middle or the lower end of the list overall for all the departments, not, not just the district attorney or myself or the fire chief. But I really think that Kiriya Martinez is going to be an easy person to work with to try to really make some positive changes in the overall employment package for the county, even if that means making some cuts elsewhere. I think that it's time that we take a look at the overall package. But I do, I do believe in this and support this for the district attorney.
Thanks, Sheriff. That's helpful, because what I didn't want to do, as much as I want to help, is put out one fire and start another one and overwhelm CAO's office and HR and staff that work with that. And it sounds like if the sheriff isn't going to push on that and maybe minimal on the fire side, then that's, it wouldn't be an issue.
And we did put some limitations, and we worked with the DA to, that's why we did a term limit for a year, and we had that the candidate would have to meet qualifications. So we did put some barriers in there.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, I could just point out one condition. The sheriff jogged my memory. For the first time in my time and knowledge of the Kings County Department, we've actually had to hire outside for engineers, which means we don't have enough people eligible in-house to promote. So we've actually had to go outside and try to recruit engineers to fill our ranks. So that's kind of the same situation that Ms. Hacker is dealing with in the DA's office. So I think that's kind of a thing that's coming to us, and it's going to crop up more often than not. And I think some of our history, what we've always experienced in the past, is kind of changing.
And I think other counties might be doing the same thing because they're going between us and taking our people. So we got to, we got to play the same game.
Yeah.
And to close off, I know you had asked if there was any budget implications. Because Ms. Hacker has such a high turnover rate, her vacancy rate is pretty high, so there's salary savings within her budget.
Got it.
Yes.
Anything else to add? Yes, sir. To make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. It's a pleasure to be here today, Alex Walker. I wanted to voice support for this measure, but I also wanted to reflect that ultimately, this, too, is a temporary fix. And I want to express my appreciation for the Board for actively showing effort and care on this issue, not just about last week with readjusting our ARPA funds to provide bonuses and other perks for our people for retention, but also that we're working to ensure that we're competitive in the market and that we're giving people and paying people what they're worth. And I wanted to advocate for a study session in the future to review our challenges and to seek the comments of department heads, as well as the public, and how we can better address these issues. And I also want to express that, I believe it was at a previous meeting that DA Hacker expressed the need to potentially hire an outside attorney for certain cases. And I think that this specific agenda item helps reduce the need for outside help and to continue to do work in-house and to attract qualified candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Sue Robinson?
I just see this as a triage situation. The biggest fire needs to be fought first. And I just want to offer my support to the DA.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, Madam DA. We'll look forward to you coming back with some good news at the podium on Tuesdays with some hiring. So, Madam Clerk, will you? Oh, did we get a...
We did have a motion that I just need to do roll call.
Motion was...
It was Supervisor Verboon and seconded by Robinson.
Got it.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
All right, five in favor. Thanks, Madam DA.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll get them. We'll get them. All right. Item D comes from Human Resources Department. Back to the podium, Carolyn. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. Carolyn Lee, Human Resources Director. I am here today to recommend adopting a resolution establishing a change in hours to the public for a summer pilot program from June 26, 2023 through September 3, 2023. This program would provide for departments to allow public contact appointment times between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Thursdays, and 8:00 AM to noon on Fridays. Hiring and retention continues to be a big focus for the county. Several of our neighboring counties have instituted alternate schedules to provide flexibility to employees and provide for a work-life balance. While making a small change to the public on Friday by being closed at noon, the county can create a benefit to our employees. Most departments have found that Friday afternoons are when they see the least number of clients. There are two departments who will not be participating in the pilot program, and that is Agriculture Commissioner's Office and the Assessor Concrete Coaters' Office. All other departments will be fully or partially opting into the pilot summer program. There is no perceived fiscal impacts. The unions affected by this pilot program were provided a copy of the 980 Summer Pilot Schedule Agreement. We met with three of the unions who requested to meet to answer the questions and concerns. If the program is approved today by the Board, we will send the agreements to departments to start getting them completed and signed by employees so that the program can become effective this coming Monday, June 26, 2023. If there are any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay, I know we've talked about this at length. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Motion is moved for approval as presented.
You have seconds.
Motion by Verboon, seconded by Neves. And please update us when the pilot's over and let us know how it went, the pros and cons, and be very interested in that.
We plan on sending out surveys to both, two separate ones, one to department heads and one to the employees to ask them their feedback. And so that way, we can put them back to the Board and let you know how it went.
Okay, and a press release to the community, too, right?
The Public Information Officer already has a presentation ready to be launched on all social platforms.
Today, they'll launch it if, once the Board approves.
Okay. And provide a quote from Sue Verboon on this one. All right. We have motion and second. Madam Clerk?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Item passes five in favor. Item E, Public Works Department. Who's representing this one? Uh, good morning, Ms. Cabrera.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, uh, Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer with the Public Works Department. Uh, before your board this morning with two items related to, uh, bridge construction projects throughout the county. Uh, the first item is a request for approval of the plans and specifications uh, that were prepared for the replacement of the 16th Avenue Bridge at Tulare Lake Canal. Uh, on January 15th of 2013, uh, your board awarded the design project to, uh, Consort Engineering, uh, previously Quincy Engineering, uh, to prepare the, uh, plan specification and estimate project for the replacement of the timber structure, uh, bridge at this location. Uh, the project is a general replacement, complete removal, reconstruction, uh, of the existing timber bridge with a concrete box culvert bridge. Um, total construction allocated amount for this project is $2.8 million with the expected working days of 76, uh, for total construction time. Uh, we plan to open the bids in a month from now if approved, so July 20th we would open, uh, the bids. And, uh, staff has been in contact with Caltrans due to the recent flood. And, um, the amount of time it took us to get this project to the point it is now ready to construction, there's now, um, uh, great quantity of water flowing through that channel. Uh, so we will, uh, award the project and work with Caltrans, um, to time the construction, uh, when it's more practical with the water flows. Um, if you have any questions, uh, be willing to answer. And the request is approval of the plans and specs and also authorizing the Public Works Department, uh, to advertise the project for construction.
Nev seconds.
Motion by, uh, motion by, uh, Fagundes, seconded by Nevs. Anybody else? Wish the Kettelman Bridge went this easy and quick. I'm disappointed. How many people are going to be using this bridge? Madam Clerk? I'm just messing with it.
Joe Nevs. Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon. Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Uh, item passes five in favor. Eighteen people. All right.
Okay. Uh, item number two, following the, uh, the bridge talk, uh, is another request for approval of the plans and specifications. Uh, this is now for, uh, the Kings County Bridge Preventative Maintenance Project. Uh, also requesting authorization to advertise the construction of this project. On April 18th of 2017, the board, uh, approved a consultant services agreement with NCM Engineering, uh, to prepare the plan specification and estimates for the Kings County Bridge Preventative Maintenance, uh, project phase two. Uh, the project, it consists of treating bridge decks with methacrylate, uh, which is kind of like a chip seal buffer bridges, uh, installing rock slope protection with fabric on four of the bridges, and then repairing asphalt concrete approaches and replacing joint seals at several bridges throughout the county. A total construction amount for this project is 1.6, uh, million funded through the, uh, FHWA Federal Highway Administration, uh, Highway Bridge, uh, program with the 11.47, uh, county match coming out of the, coming out of the county road fund. Expected working days is 70 for construction. And, uh, similar to the other one, the, uh, bid opening is scheduled for a month from now, so July 19th, July 20th. And then, uh, same caveat, uh, working with Caltrans to as soon as the, the, the flows allow. And it's practical for construction to start, uh, we will award the project and postpone construction until a, um, better date. Uh, so the request is approving the plans and specs and, uh, authorizing the Public Works Department to advertise the BPMP project. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Anything from the board?
Second, Mr. Sheriff.
Most of our Fagundes, seconded by Nevs, Madam Clerk.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes five in favor.
I do have a question though, not with this project, but the Houston Avenue Bridge, do you have a timeframe when you might start that project?
No, since that one is on the federal, um, federal system, it doesn't go through the FEMA. We have to reach out through Caltrans and go through their emergency relief program. Uh, we have initiated the conversation with them, uh, personally met out there with two of the Caltrans reps from Sacramento. Uh, so they've looked at it, they've done their report. Um, we will be bringing a resolution in the future that's a formal closure from Caltrans. Um, and that allows us to, um, kind of go after the funds to get that bridge replaced.
So probably a year from now, huh?
Yeah, it, it won't be a quick fix. We'll need, um, engineering design and then construction.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item comes from administration. Good morning, Matthew.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Boye at Kings County Administration. So the, um, Kettelman City Surface Water Treatment Plant, um, the state funding that they received from the State Water Resources Control Board and the United States Department of Agriculture, um, that funding was contingent upon the district establishing a reserve fund, um, to kind of, you know, help with the longevity for the operations and maintenance of that treatment facility. And so, um, to go ahead and establish that, the county worked with the district to, uh, draft a 20-year agreement where the county would fund this reserve to the tune of $150,000 per year of our hazardous waste taxes going into this reserve account. Um, and then over the course of the 20-year period, the district would then draw upon that for various things such as any potential catastrophic outages at the California Aqueduct or residential operation and maintenance increases, um, above the baseline there, as well as any potenti- uh, excuse me, potential inflationary costs with the state water project, um, charges there. So, um, the request before your board this morning is for $109,198, and that is exactly, um, what is outlined in the amortization schedule of the agreement. Um, there is, uh, as of June 6th, in that reserve account, $698,933. So there are, uh, sufficient funds in that reserve to go ahead and, uh, fund this request. And so these, these normally come, you know, once a year, um, by the district. And so, uh, I think the last one came roughly around the same time. So, um, with that, if you guys have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the district, uh, here today?
I didn't see anybody in the audience, but I don't see anybody online.
One, I just want to say I appreciate that they're not asking for more than what's scheduled last couple of years. They were asking, uh, for more, but, uh, this money is here. It's for that reason. It's a 20-year commitment. Um, that said, I wish someone was on because I wanted to talk about, um, a couple of questions on, uh, the efforts they're making right now, the motions they're going through right now to raise the water rates, um, on the community. And I wanted to know how the, these monies help offset that. Cause again, the intention besides being a requirement, um, the intentions, uh, when I was here for the vote back in, uh, 2014 was that these monies were going to help, um, keep those costs low on a community, um, that will have a hard time affording those water rate, um, increases. And so, um, I think this is the second or third, uh, water rate increase since we've done this. And I, and I had some concerns on that. Uh, but I see Alicia Hukobos here from, uh, the community of Kettelman. Alicia, do you mind just coming up if I can ask you, or just get your feedback mostly on, um, on the, uh, do you mind coming up? Thank, thank you.
I think, thank you, Alicia. I think issue like this, it all, it's also, uh, communication. So, you know, they are paying a water bill. They need to know what they're getting for the return. So it could be explained so where people understand there's less questions.
Mm-hmm. No, I agree. And, and thank you, Alicia.
Yeah, sure.
Um, Alicia, is it, is this still seen? Is it still seen by the community in your opinion?
Mm-hmm.
Is positive that we got the community off the groundwater? And I know that they're raising the water, uh, rates and they're trying to get you guys another well, a backup well.
Yeah.
But the community wanted surface water, right? And that's what this does.
This, yeah, and it was along, as you well know, many of the supervisors here well know it's, it was, gosh, close to maybe 20 years to, to get that project off the ground in Kettelman. And so, um, I did talk to Rosa last week sometime and, you know, just asked her about the water rates. And so, um, you know, it'll, it'll be a few dollars to some folks, but you know, I, you know, I think in general, some of the, the community people are happy that it's, you know, it's a reliable source for us and we're not always having to shut down the wells, flush out the wells and, you know, cause further havoc on our, on our old, you know, s- some of us have some old pipes in our homes. You know, my house was built in 1945, so, um, you know, so I, I think in, for the most part, I think people are, are okay with, with the, are happy with, with our, our treatment and so, and it's just the ma- the cost, you know, everything goes up. And so it's just a reality for for everything that we purchase now.
Yes, and I, I just want to make sure that, you know, what is communicated is correctly corrected. Um, and that the fact that the water treatment plant is there is not what's causing an increase because this money is to pay for the filters, membranes, chemicals, um, all the O and M costs for the water treatment plant to be there. Um, and so that I just want to make sure there was no connection to that, but I appreciate your feedback.
Sure.
You're a long time resident of the community and, uh, and you got your air to the street there.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. All right. Anything from the board?
Second.
Most of our Fagundes, seconded by Verboon, Madam Clerk.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Thank you. Item passes five in favor. All right. Floor is yours, CAO.
Good morning, Board members. Kiriya Martinez, CAO. At this time, we will be presenting the recommended budget for next year. This time I want to go ahead and call Melissa, Dom and Matthew up to the front as they will be presenting the presentation. I want to start off by thanking them for, uh, stepping up. You know, we had activated the EOC and also we had a vacancy in our office, so they really stepped up and were able to attend meetings when I was not there. And so it's only fair for them to do the presentation this morning. We do have an active photo contest going on for the final budget cover, so I wanted to take the minute to also let all the employees and the public who are listening that we are having active, um, photo contest going on. At this time, I'll go ahead and start the presentation. This will also be available, the budget book will be available for the public on our website following this meeting. So we will start with, the presentation should take about 15 to 20 minutes. We'll do a basic assumptions. We'll go over the budget equation. We'll go over some general fund history, some budget charts and the position allocation.
All right, so these are some of the basic assumptions that are baked into the recommended budget. So, um, right there at the top, we have a, a decrease in our Prop 70, uh, Prop 172. Um, these are our public safety sales taxes. Um, so this is kind of, you know, the, a decrease by 6% ahead of roughly 800,000. And so this is kind of the post-pandemic contraction of spending, everybody kind of getting back to normal levels. Um, next, um, as we've been talking about flood and the impacts of that, um, we do anticipate a decrease in our property tax, uh, in our secured rolls, um, of 2.6 million. So generally we grow in our secured role roughly by 1.7 million. Um, you know, each year that was an average over the last six years. Um, however, in this current recommended, we're seeing no growth and instead the obvious decrease there of 2.6 million. Um, next we have some, uh, lost grant funding there in the DA's office, um, some CAT grant funding of 150,000. Um, this is a, uh, four-year grant term, so, uh, we won't be able to apply for this again for four years. So it's 150 this year, um, that we're losing, but over the course of the next four years is 600, so 150 each year roughly. And then next, uh, we have some reductions and, uh, shortfalls in our 2005 jail bond, uh, refunding there, uh, to the tune of about $325,000. So, um, with that, if you go to the next slide, please. So this slide here is a comparison of what we have in our current year adopted budget of fiscal year 22, 23 in relation to what the departments initially requested for 23, 24 at the beginning of this process. So a couple of points to make. You can see the, you know, revenue increasing by roughly 10 million, which is a good thing. Um, however, if you go down to the expense category below, you can see expenses are increasing by 17 million. So a little bit of a disconnect there. Um, a point to make there on the requested side, there, that we are showing a surplus of 4.25 million. Um, however, if you look above in the contingencies, you'll notice that the contingencies are at zero. So you can essentially think of the contingencies at 4.2 million and have no budget or no deficit, meaning we have a balanced budget at that point. Next slide, please. So here we are comparing again our current year 22, 23 adopted budget with what, uh, administration is bringing forward, uh, for recommendation, um, this morning for our recommended budget. So, um, a couple of points to make here, going, again, going back to the revenue and expenditure side. We do show current revenue expected to grow by roughly 7.64 million. Um, however, while expenditures are expected to grow by 13 and a half million, so they're growing at more than double that of the revenue. And again, going back to the basic assumptions that I had just outlined a couple of slides ago, all of those hits, um, to our reductions in revenue, um, are outlined here. So, um, with that, you'll see below the, uh, general fund contingencies of 10.16 million. Um, these are absolutely critical, um, for fiscal health and sustainability. And so they are at about 3.09% of overall expenses. The next slide, please. And then this is a general fund history slide showing our general fund budgets over the last 15 years, going back all the way to fiscal year 2009 to 2010. So as you'll see, the very first year there in 2009, 2010, this was the, uh, full impact of the recession. Um, as you, uh, you could see from the influx of the 2.6 million dollars from our reserves to ensure that we were able to meet our, uh, current year obligations there. Um, I want to focus your attention on the bold column in the middle, the available column. So this is going to show us, um, what our, uh, available financing is he- and uses have been over time. You can see that they have been, um, you know, exponentially increasing, um, over the last 15 years. And then if you look all the way to the right, you'll see our contingencies. And as you can see, they've been growing little by little over time. But again, refocusing back on the, um, on the, uh, uses there. Um, it's all relative to the amount of expenses that the county has. So obviously as your expenses continue to increase, you want to have a proportional, uh, contingent, uh, proportional contingent, excuse me, I can't speak this morning, proportional contingency to go ahead and support those, um, ongoing expenses. Um, next slide, please. So here we outline, um, the recommended 23, 24 general fund net county costs by department. And we put them on this, uh, bar graph here. And as you can see, um, um, all of the departments to the left-hand side, um, with some of the largest bars are some of our public safety departments, um, continuing to signify the, um, importance and priority of those departments here in the county. So we have, uh, we have the sheriffs there, um, all the way to the left, uh, just shy of 30 million or just creeping right at that 30 million mark in net county cost. Again, uh, hits the general fund. Um, next we have probation just over the $10 million mark there. Um, and then we have DA, um, just right behind them there as well. Um, a couple other notable, um, net county cost impacts here, uh, the consolidated courts, which is our defense of the accused contracts, as well as finance and HSA. Next slide, please. This slide is going to outline, um, the relation between what the department, um, has in their current fiscal year 22, 23 adopted budget versus what we're bringing forth this morning in the 23, 24 recommended budget as far as net county cost goes. So again, these are direct impacts to the county general fund. Um, so, uh, I'm not going to go each department line by line, but I do want to highlight some of the, um, big needle movers, both on the sheer dollar amount side as well as on the, uh, percentage side. So, um, we have the sheriffs there, um, an increase in their net county cost of 2.56 million or, uh, an increase of 9.46% from the current fiscal year. Uh, next we have the DA at $283,000 increase, uh, which is 6.37%. Next we have elections with a $203,000 increase in net county cost, uh, which is 21.14% from the current year. Next we have finance at 271,000, which is 9% of an increase. Um, again, as I mentioned earlier, the consolidated courts there, 204,000, which is 5.3%. Next, human resources at 172,000 increase in net county costs or 11.06%. And then a couple more here. We have ag commissioner at 223,000, which is 19.58% increase. And lastly, the board of supervisors at 144,000, uh, or a 15.42% increase. Next slide, please. And then next, um, this is the same exact comparison. Um, however, it's not comparing the hits to net county cost. These are, um, unreimbursed costs for our internal service funds, our ISFs. So these are not impacts to general fund. These are impacts to those respective internal service funds. So again, some of the, uh, notable, um, changes here from the current, um, 22, 23 adopted budget versus what's being recommended before your board this morning. We have public works fleet here, uh, a decrease in their, um, need for a drawdown from their ISF of 2.86 million, which is a decrease of 95.47%. And then on the IT side, so overall we've got, you know, various IT ISFs, but overall, um, the, the, the general lump sum impact of the IT ISF, um, is an increase in contributions from their, um, internal service fund of 100, or excuse me, of $224,000, which is a 60.01%. which is a sixty point one three percent increase. With that, I will turn it over to Domingo Cruz.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, for the following chart, we will depict the county's total recommended expenditures, financing sources, the total general fund expenditures and the financing sources, the discretionary expenses and the overall position allocation that is needed to operate the whole county. So, next slide, please. This chart reflects all recommended expenditures in the county, which is about four hundred and fifty-eight point zero eight million. This includes the general fund, special revenues, the capital project funds and debt service funds. If you could look at the chart there, the general government, we have thirty-six point thirty-two million expenditures. The public safety, one twenty-four point six million. Public transportation, seventeen point eight nine million. Health, sixty-one point nine seven million. Public assistance, one thirty-one point six six million. The education and recreation, nineteen point eight seven million. Capital projects, twenty-six point four four million. And the all other category, thirty-nine point thirty-two million. As you can see there, the public assistance is again our highest expenditure functions and has remained that way since FY two thousand fourteen and fifteen, when public safety had the highest expenditure function. Next slide, please. On chart two, we see all the recommended financing sources, which is four hundred and fifty-eight point zero eight million. Again, it includes general fund, special revenues, capital projects, funds and debt service funds. As you can see, the fund balance came in at fifty-eight point zero seven million. State federal, two hundred and thirty-five point five six million. Public safety, the sales tax, twelve point five five million. The hazardous waste, one point three million. General taxes, sixty-eight point zero five million. The charges for services, fifteen point one nine million, and then the other revenue, sixty-seven point thirty-four. Again, as you can see to the right, the state federal, we really rely half of our financing sources from them. Next slide, please. So in this chart, we have the recommended general fund expenditure, which is three hundred and thirty-nine point four eight million. So the general government, we have twenty-eight point one six million. Public assistance, one twenty-six point five two million. Health, sixty-one point nine seven million. The education and recreation, three point six three million. Public safety, one oh seven point nine eight million. And then the debt services, one point zero six million. As mentioned earlier, our contingencies is ten point one six millions. Next slide, please. For chart four, we have the recommended general fund financing sources, which is three hundred and thirty-nine point four eight million. For state and federal, two hundred and three point six eight million. Public safety, sales tax, ten point three, three, three million. Hazardous waste tax, one point three million. The general taxes, fifty-four point seven million. Charges for services and fees, fourteen point three million. The other revenues, thirty-one point four four million. Then the fund balance came in at twenty-three point seven four million. Again, it's, it, the, as you can see on the right side, the state federal, really where we get our source for our revenues. Next slide, please. So this chart is basically the recommended general fund expenditure that we mentioned previously in the amount of three thirty-nine point four eight million, which is divided to virtually no discretion and discretionary. It points out that eighty-three percent or two hundred and eighty-three point zero three million, which is on the left side, I think it's a, it blurred a little bit. It has no or very little discretion. This, this means that we cannot touch these funds. That's about eighty-three percent of the general fund. So, on the right, the one in the green, only fifty-six point forty-five million or seventeen percent of the budget contains discretionary programs that are subject to reduction. So, example is the sheriff, contingencies, probation, district attorney are the examples. So I'd like to also point out that when someone sees the budget, the initial thought is that the county has three hundred and thirty-nine point forty-eight million to spend on, but in reality, we only have fifty-six point four five million in discretionary. So these are those departments that your board can decide to increase or decrease if you so desire. And I will be followed by Melissa. Next slide.
Good morning, Melissa Shuffel, administration. I'm coming before you to show you the position changes for recommended. Our recommendation includes one thousand six hundred seventy-three point three one full-time employees, which accounts for thirty-nine adds and thirty-seven point six deletes, resulting in a one point four full-time employee change for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. We have five unfunded positions in this recommendation. One is in the DA's office and four is in public health. The one thousand six hundred and seventy-three point three one full-time employees in this recommendation is a point zero eight percent increase from the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three adopted budget. We did not recommend additional net increase of eight full-time employees from our requested budget. Next slide. In fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we adopted one thousand six hundred fifty-eight point nine one full-time FTE. And after the budget was adopted, the board approved a total, a net total of thirteen full-time employee change throughout the fiscal year. The changes throughout this fiscal year bring the amended fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three total to one thousand six seventy-one point nine one. The net change of one point four full-time employees from the previous slide brings our full-time employee recommendation for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four to one thousand six hundred seventy-three thirty-one point three one. Next slide.
I want to close off by stating that we do have a balanced budget. We do not have any contested budgets at the moment. I want to thank all department heads who helped us get to this recommended budget. I do want to know and close off by stating that you did notice that our revenues are not keeping up with the expenses and our fund balances, what keeping us, was keeping us balanced. And we do have some notable items impacting us next year, the impacts of the flood, impacting our property tax. But I do want to take a moment to state that the, all county departments are going to have to come together if our focus is going to be on the recruitment and retention moving forward. Seeing these increases in the budget, we were able to manage through them, but I do ask, moving forward, that we do maintain our status quo so we can see what items we can implement in the future. And at this time, this concludes our presentation at this time. If you have any questions for us, if not, we request to adopt the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four recommended budget as presented and schedule final budget hearings for Tuesday, August eighth at ten AM.
We're adopting the proposed budget.
Correct, the recommended today.
Okay. Anything from department heads? There's no, at this point, nothing's uncontested, nothing's contested. Okay, good job, good job, good job. Any questions from the board on the budget?
Make a motion to present, recommend as presented.
All right, good job, motion by Verboen. Second by Fagundes.
And thank you staff for doing a great presentation. Matt, I do have a question. And I don't know if it means anything, but on your first presentation on, it shows here, go back to ten years, go to two thousand nine, ten year, some notes on here. Just curious what it would look like. What it would look like if you added two more columns to give reference to population, maybe three more, three more columns, or just for fun, population per year in oh nine, ten, you know, like that, and then how many employees we had from those years. And then maybe sum it up with our ag income. You know, I know that last year was two point three billion. Just kind of see where we're at and how much it contributes.
Okay, yep, you can make that adjustment.
I'm just curious what it, what it would look like, what our, if our increases are keeping up with population and taxes.
On the capital outlay budget, the, I see that there's some library branch remodels in there. Are you guys able to use a library, pull from library contingencies versus so much of capital outlay for those? Because libraries and almost seven million on their contingencies.
So, that seven million is still, that's the half of the, the grant already came in. So, it's already part of that capital outlay, that part of contingency. So the next seven million, we will get that this coming fiscal year. That's why you only see seven million there.
So some of the contingencies are already spoken for because they're carryover?
Yes, sir.
Sweet, that's the way we look at that. Okay, and then what page do you find the breakdown of the hazardous waste tax and what the recommended projects are?
Give me one second.
Can I make a quick point or a clarification to your point supervisor? As far as the seven million, speaking for some of the contingencies already, that ten point one six million contingency on the general fund equation that was in the slides, that contingency that Dom's talking about is, doesn't impact that at all. That ten point one six, that's for general fund only. This is for the contingency for the capital project for the, the library, so.
Got it.
Supervisor, if you go to page twenty-four, it's Schedule Six, Recommended, the hazardous waste tax, it's right in the middle. It's adopted at, or it's recommended at one point three million and it's basically stayed the same as the previous year.
Okay, thank you, I'll look at that on my time. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Thank you, good work, CEO Martinez and all staff. And then that August eighth, that, is that a, that's a Tuesday, okay. So we'll just, we're going to have our regular board meeting and then take up the budget afterwards, okay.
And then there's a Board of Equalization still check, so that it'll be a busy day.
We have BOE on that day too, an appeals hearing, that day just.
I don't know if it's a, is it scheduled up here? They're still working on it.
All right.
Yeah.
You don't want to go back to doing this on Mondays, when we were doing the budget on Mondays?
If your board has appetite, we can move it to that Monday, August seventh.
We'll just talk to the board later, see how we want to go, if, if it's a jam-packed day and. I like, I like the budget to have one hundred percent of focus, to be fair to staff and, and to the board, but we can talk later. Okay, so Madam Clerk.
Yeah, it's already done.
Okay, so, okay, so let's move on to. Yes, sir, we have public hearings last time. Okay, public hearings coming from Department of Finance.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Here again this morning, presenting the introduction of an ordinance establishing our jail booking fee rate for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Each year, Government Code Section two nine five five zero requires us to calculate and set this rate based on prior year amounts. The fee calculated for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is a hundred and sixty-three dollars per booking. This is a thirteen dollar increase from the previous year charge of a hundred and fifty dollars. The change is mainly due to increasing employee salaries and benefits as well as increased building depreciation costs as a result of building projects being completed and the capital, capitalization of those projects. Historically, we would charge this rate to the cities for the number of bookings they brought into our jail. However, the state took away this authority in two thousand and eleven and instead, we get a statutory annual allocation of about a hundred and twenty thousand to, to cover the shortfall. With the passage of AB eighteen sixty-nine, it also eliminated our authority to add this charge to a convicted defendant's fees or fines. So, so even though we really don't have any use for this rate or aren't, or unable to use it at this time, we still must calculate it and formalize it each year in an ordinance. If, if for some reason the state decides to eliminate that hundred and twenty thousand dollar funding, we can go back and use this, this rate, half of the rate actually, to charge the cities for any bookings they bring in. So, with that, I'm asking you to consider adopting or approving the introduction of this ordinance establishing the county booking fee rate for twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year and to waive the first reading.
Okay, thank you. So before we open the hearing, any comments, questions from the board? Okay, we'll open up the public hearing. Do you have anything to add on your presentation at this time? Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
I have not received any written or online correspondence.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board, no questions. Close the public hearing, chair, I'll chain a motion.
If there's no question or comment, I'll move approval and waive with first reading.
I'll make him read it. Nev seconds.
Okay, thank you for being on the motion, second by Nev, Madam Clerk.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes is absent.
Item passes for favor one absent. Okay, thank you, counsel.
Yes, I want to go back to regular agenda item F two and the discussion about potentially rescheduling or changing the date for the scheduled budget hearings. They're currently scheduled by motion, which was passed today to start on the eighth. If they are going to change, then we need to take action today.
Well, I don't think we need to.
Not the budget hearings we have a question with, it's a, it's a Board of Equalization.
Then that can be addressed later on.
Well, like I said, we could talk.
Okay.
Worst comes to worst, I don't, I don't understand why it'd have to be done today, we come back on Tuesday on agenda.
We could, we could do it at a later date.
Okay, all right. Well, I think that takes us to board member announcements, see Nevs.
Thank you, Chair. Continue to deal with some of the flooding issues, but some of the flows on the Kings are down to irrigation to man only. So maybe work with the sheriff in the next week and try to figure out what we can do with the river for the Fourth of July. Recreation is a big component. The, the problem is the water's going to continue to be extremely cold. Just the volume of water will not be to the, to the release that has taken place during the flooding event. But we can put that on the agenda for discussion next week. The monthly meeting of the Kings County Housing Authority was held on June fourteenth with a review of the income and expenses. We also approved the utility allowance adjustments. And the authority's having a difficult time finding funding to refinance one of the housing developments. Higher interest rates and affordable housing rents are making that, that financial backing difficult. The authority has a couple of options, either lower the outstanding balance by about a hundred and fifty grand or so to make the refinancing formula work out or look for other sources to finance a loan. So, raising the rents would make that, also make that balance work out. But then you start getting out of that affordable rent range. So there was an extension requested and looking for more time to try to figure that funding option out. Kings Federal Credit Union meeting, supervisors meeting was also held on the fourteenth and reviewed all the statements and audits. Thank Rob for his leadership. World Elder Abuse Awareness Breakfast took place on June fifteenth. Educational Fair, performance by Elvis, all took place. I want to thank Richard Fagundes, Rhonda and Ron Mann, Bill Lynch, Jim Kilner, Greg and Bill from the Lemoore Lions Club for all their hard work cooking the eggs, sausage, pancakes. They made eggs to order, as long as you wanted scrambled. All the eggs, every, every order was made to, to order, but sure wanted scrambled eggs. There were about two hundred and fifty people, I think, that attended the event. There were about 250 people, I think, that attended the event. Also want to thank Doug and Rusty for showing up and, and help serving and assisting the seniors around.
Didn't serve, I just ate.
Oh, did you?
Rusty served me.
And how was it?
It was good.
Was it?
Yeah.
Did you have the eggs?
That's it, yeah, sick.
No sausage? No pancakes? We did such a great job on those pancakes, too. I just can't believe it. A big thank you. Exactly. A big thank you to the Kings County Commission on Aging for another successful day in our moment, so I want to thank them. The Southport Kings, we had a meeting on the 15th in the evening, still continue to talk about the 218 election process, receiving updates on the amended groundwater sustainability plan submission after meeting with, with staff. Well-registered pump limitations and plans to address subsidence are high on the list. And that's pretty much the difference between what other agencies were successful and we were not. So we continue to do work on those issues. And then the American Legion Breakfast was held on Friday, the 16th. So with that, thanks.
Thank you, CROs. Nevs, you guys, Nevs, anything?
Well, Joe mentioned both what we done last week, Housing Authority and Commission on Aging and it's, one thing about Commission on Aging, it does a wonderful job out there feeding seniors and every bit of funding that she has goes towards that. And I like, I like to see that.
That's right.
And it was a fun day for them. I passed there about 1 o'clock in the afternoon, they were still, still enjoying the day.
Nice.
So it was, it was really good.
All right.
Thanks. And I guess yesterday, we had a fire at Murph.
Fire, yes, a lot of smoke, yes. Did deploy. There was a water flow alarm, but I don't think there was a lot of damage.
Yeah. No shooting reported, it was under control and everything. Thank you.
Thanks, Sir. For getting to, Super Boom.
Last week, I attended Kings Fair. They had a presentation of $3.5 million to help out with the fair facilities. We helped the fair apply for a grant for some funding. This is the first step, 3.5 that we got it. She had five pictures of what was going to be done at the fair. One of the buildings will be remodeled and used for, enhance the facility, but also used for a cooling center and a warming center if needed, and also a facility that could take on people during a disaster, such as horses, animals, or people to stay in that facility. They showed some new buildings going to be made, a new stage is going to be built for concerts. Also, I think 75 or 100 RV parking stalls with solar shade above them, plus solar put on the property. So a lot of good things happening at our fair. Of course, just like anything else, there's no public, there's no article on to explain the facts. So the facts are now that it's going to be a, I've heard it's going to be coal storage, and I heard it's going to be home of cat. So I got to talk to the fair manager to get the proper information out so people quit telling these bad stories like they do all the time. Friday, I was a speaker at the Women's Republican Water Town Hall. So I spoke on my, on the groundwater ordinance. And then that was about it. Thank you.
You did the Women's Democratic Town Hall, too, right?
That's it, Friday night.
Okay. Oh, you said Republican.
Oh, yeah, Democratic, yeah. I didn't, Rusty did a Republican, I tagged on his.
Hey, that's a good job, though, to go, to go there. Good job.
It was Mark Arak. So Mark Arak is an author on several books on Derry Lake Bottom, and he spent a week at my grandmother's house years ago getting facts on the lake from, from, you know, back in the 30s. She's in his book, so I talked about, you know, where my family came from. We all, my whole family came from the Derry Lake Basin, from farming to kitchens to gas stations, to trucking, and brought it into the ordinance and how I became efficient in water and why I did what I had to do.
Nice. Thank you. Good work. Good work, C Robinson.
I, too, attended the Housing Authority meeting, also helped to serve at the World Elder Abuse Event. It was, yes, it was a true pleasure to serve Supervisor Verboon, the eggs, but more importantly, the elderly. And a good job to Bobby.
I am older than you.
Not that much. Good, it was, congratulations to Bobby. She did a good job and staff, so thank you for that. Attended the press release and toured the Kings County Fair as well. And then, and then after that was all done, had to come back with my own kid and, and go to the fair. And, and I believe the fair's headed in the right direction. They, they, it seems like the flow there is a little bit better maybe than last year. And it just, it seemed a little, a little bit dressed up from, from what it had been previously. So hopefully, hopefully that'll, that'll work well. And the $3.5 million that was granted to them supposedly will help with infrastructure and things of that nature. So in the future, when we have emergencies, we can turn to the fair for their help.
Good work. Man, I already used my time, so we'll go to CA Martinez.
There is nothing in board correspondence for upcoming events. We have the children's storybook garden and museum. We'll host a Cooking for Kids class on June 21st and 28th from 10 to noon. The cost is $60 for grades kindergarten to fifth grade. The Kings County Library will be hosting a reptile run animal presentation on Thursday, June 22nd at 10:00 AM at the Hanford Civic Auditorium. And the city of Hanford hosts a free fitness court class every Saturday from 9 to 10, rain or shine. The next will be on June 24th at the Hidden Valley Park in Hanford. There will be a Kings County Employee Blood Drive on Thursday, July 13th from 9 to 1. Buses will be here on campus. Walkups are welcome, however, for faster registration, we recommend scheduling online. We have some slots open. And the save the date for the ribbon cutting on the Kings Building is scheduled for August 30th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. For upcoming agenda items, we have a lot since it's the end of the fiscal year. Next week, administration has five items, Defense of the Accused Contracts, Well-Pather Medical Jail Contractor Third Amendment, Capital Partnership First Amendment, Agreement with Kings County Commission on Aging for Fiscal Year General Fund Contribution, and Multiple Board and Commission's Appointments. The Assessor Clerk Order has an amendment to the tax reassessment for property damaged. Behavioral Health has 11 items, a few resolutions for some funding for iHeartRadio, 10 different agreements with Judge Educational Center, Inc., West Care, California, Ms. Sanchez, Precision Psychiatric, Inc., and two different agreements with King's View. CDA has two items, will be in some act and farmland security zone reenrollment application. Finance has a follow-up for the established booking fees. Fire has two items, agreement of fire services with the city of Avanil and the purchase of two fire apparatus. Human Resources has an agreement with Cassidy We Mart Liberty. Human Services has four items, agreement with Kings Commission on Aging for Cow Learn Program Services, Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program Round Four Grant Application, agreement with community-based organizations to provide medical application, and agreement with Renewal Kings United Way. Public Health has an agreement with Fresno Pacific for an internship. Public Works has eight items regarding the Kings Fire Station Fifth Amendment, Kings County Fire Station Fourth Amendment, lease with the USDA Farm Service Agency, lease building space, Avanil Cut Off Road, roadway improvement phase, and a few other highway safety improvement programs. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. That takes board to close session. One item's been pulled, right, counsel? We're done with that business?
Yes, the personnel matter has been pulled.
So we'll have a conference with labor negotiations. All the units are outlined publicly on the agenda. We adjourn till Tuesday, June 27th, 9:00 AM. And the board, we're back here at 11:00 AM for California Public Finance Authority regular meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Cheers.